I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number two, open public forum, anybody that is not on the agenda that wishes to speak. Go ahead Chuck. Push the button on that microphone, just a quick push on it. Is it green?
It is now.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me begin by stating that I am 100% in support of our fired police departments. I'm absolutely convinced that both entities are in need of additional space. I've never disputed that since my involvement with this began in 2016. My primary concern is the Sauk River road location for the fire department. I just don't believe that it's the proper location and I am concerned that we are about to make a good enough decision that we will have to live with for the next 50 or 60 years. I've either been to or watched most of these meetings, I've heard the numbers from the response time studies. Just because some arbitrary council somewhere decided that it's good enough if a fire engine gets to a given property 80% of the time within 14 minutes, that doesn't make it right. I'm a common sense guy and for virtually anybody in Cold Spring, a fire hall on Sauk River Road is going to add at least six to eight minutes to any fire call. It's simple common sense. I've talked with a lot of people who share this view. I thank the committees for the work they did. However, most people don't believe that we've given a fully fair discussion to other possible options. I watched when the architects showed us that a 41,000 square foot facility wouldn't fit on any of the downtown properties. Personally, I didn't need a diagram for that. But when some people started to suggest that a fire hall alone wouldn't fit on any of the downtown properties by itself, that just doesn't pass the sniff test for me. Give me a minute to show you a quick visual. I apologize that this isn't any bigger. If you can see that little green box there, that's the existing fire hall. This is the wedge shaped piece of property across from Audrey's office. This is, the yellow up here is right across the road. This little green square is three times the size of the existing fire hall in square footing, which is roughly what they're asking for. Fits there with parking across the street. This is three times the size of the existing fire hall in a rectangular configuration. Fits there with parking across the street. But here's the one I want to focus on. The Schwell property, for lack of a better word. This square is three times the size of the existing fire department. That is the Schwell property in yellow. Okay? That is three times the size of the existing fire hall. That is the Schwell property. Does the Schwell property have challenges? Of course it does. Of course it does. This is a photo of the old Cold Spring Granite Company. If y'all remember it, it was mammoth. It was all built on the same type of property that the Schwell property is. It was built 100 years ago. If we could engineer the granite company site for all those buildings 100 years ago, I'm sure we can engineer the Schwell property. And yes, there's some granite up in this corner. But with modern mobile diamond sign technology, that is not an insurmountable problem. I know I'm over three minutes, but I'm gonna ask you if I can keep going. It bothers me that it seems a few of you are simply dead set against spending any more money to purchase land for a different location. Period. And it feels to me like it's either some kind of personal thing going on, which is very disturbing to me, or you simply don't want egg on your face for having purchased the Sauk River property and then not used it for that particular design purpose. That property is a good investment, always will be. I don't know a single person in town that has a problem with us having purchased that property. If we're going to build a fire hall, it isn't going to move for 50 or 60 years, and we're gonna spend five or six million dollars on it, and we have to spend another three or $400,000 to buy an appropriate piece of property, then I say it's money well spent. I've spent a lot of time in various decision making positions in my years, and without exception, every single decision tree I have ever seen has safety at the top. Every single decision tree. Safety should be the single most important factor when making a decision as to where this fire hall is going to be. Getting back to the response time study, I don't like the way we cherry pick it to suit our narrative. I've heard the 80% 14 minute thing tossed back at me many times. How many times have you heard that the study showed that the ideal location for a fire hall in Cold Spring is right where it sits now, or very damn close to it? In closing, Chief Bloom, Chief Weber, I respect your needs. I am not trying to derail your efforts to obtain substantial additional space. I'm a simple man. I've mellowed a lot over the years. I've mellowed a lot since 2016 when I got involved in this. I don't like to bug others. I don't like to be bugged. But I simply couldn't live with myself if I didn't get up here tonight and speak my position one more time on something that is so very important to this city's future. Finally, I ask you to question some of the things you're being told. E.G., do they make common sense to you? If not, please have the courage to politely challenge these statements. If we continue to approach this with open minds and we respect each other's thoughts and we listen to one another, I am confident we can come to a solution that is palatable to the taxpayers of this city. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks Chuck.
You too.
Mr. Mayor, can I just respond to-
Yes, go ahead.
Chuck, I just want to respond to one of your statements. You made the statement that, you know, egg on our face for buying that property out there. Well, just so we clear it up, we never bought that property for a fire hall. We bought that property, initially bought the property for treatment expansion when the property came up for sale, knowing we were landlocked for expansion. After a discussion with fire, police, wherever we're moving, that's when that property got brought into the equation here. So, we never bought the property intended for the fire hall to go up there to begin with. So, just wanted to clear that up. Thanks. Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll go on to number three, approval of the agenda. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Brian makes a motion to approve. Mike seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number four, consent agenda. A, minutes. June 28, 2022 regular meeting, recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion.
Make that motion.
Doug makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second that.
Make seconds at any discussion. Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number five, Barry Bellnap, candidate for county commissioner.
Hi. Mayor, Council, everybody, thank you. My name is Barry Bellnap. I'm running for county commissioner in the third district. And to conversation I just had with Mike, if you Google the district lines online, the old district still comes up more often than the new district. I assure you, Cold Spring is in the new district. A little bit about myself, I live by Marty. I'm a commercial banker, commercial nag banker down at Harvest Bank in Kimball. I've been there for about 10 years. I have four kids, three of whom attend Recoree. The fourth one's gonna start this fall. So, we've been here now for a couple of years. Background is in banking. Before that, I was in diplomacy. I was actually in the United States State Department, living in South America and Germany for a couple of years. Yeah, married for about 15 years now. Why am I running for county commissioner? It's, I have a background in local public service since we've been back in the last 10 years. I served on the Holy Cross School Board in Marty for 10 years. I was part of the committee that stood up the new Kimball Library Building, which has been a great success for the community. And when the incumbent for the third district decided to withdraw his candidacy, it created an open opportunity that really appealed to me, just based on the service I've done and being overseas. What do I think I bring to the position? I consider myself a fairly curious guy, and I think is what you guys are seeing tonight and talking about. Your position, the county commissioner, are pretty broad remits. There's a lot of stuff going on. So, with the commercial banking, I'm learning stuff from my customers all the time, whether it's dairy farming, rental real estate, hair salon, all kinds of stuff. I really look forward to that aspect of the county commission. I like getting involved and taking part in those sorts of things. Brought up the diplomat piece because I consider myself something of a bridge builder. I think it's super important in government roles that you guys have, you know, all the different community organizations we all get involved in, to try to be able to understand different perspectives and try to understand where people are trying to go and try to create shared priorities. That's what I did when I worked for the State Department, often in different languages. And it's a skillset and an attitude that I would bring towards the county commission. I'm not afraid of complexity and hard decisions. That goes part and parcel with banking. But when it comes to, you know, inevitably, as I'm gathering just a little bit of what you're talking about here, inevitably, not everybody's gonna be satisfied. And I think you can, that can be handled different ways. From my perspective, I see people at the gas station, the grocery store, church, wherever it is, ball fields. And if I have to deliver bad news to somebody, I want them to understand they were respected, they were heard, and I want to be able to look them in the face and say, you know what, we're probably gonna have a chance to cross paths again. And, you know, I want to be able to say, you know what, look, we didn't see eye to eye or weren't able to do something, but we're gonna have an opportunity again. And I don't want to make enemies out of it. So, in short, you know, I think, in terms of priority, I'm a commercial banker. I support business, I support agriculture. But I also have four little kids. We love living in Stearns County. There's a great park system. It's clean, it's nice. I want to be part of preserving that. I want to make sure we have public safety provided for the way it needs to be. I just want Stearns County to stay good for my family and hopefully make it a little better. And so, as we pointed out, there's seven of us running for this position. So, there's a primary coming up on August 9. I would appreciate anybody's support that's so inclined. I'm gonna leave a couple of flyers here somewhere if anybody wants to find my Facebook page. Yeah, I'm just here to introduce myself and love your support for county commissioner.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Number six, resolution 2022-21, resolution approving of a variance for Chris Weber.
Hi, Chris.
Yes, I do.
Can you give a quick, just a brief-
Yes. I am looking to build a deck onto one of my front yards that is within the 40 feet setback from the center of the road because of my house position on my property.
All right. He's, he's got, he's got a corner lot. That means he's got two front, two front yards. And so, he's got a 25 foot, 25 foot setback?
Yeah, 25 foot setback from the curb, 40 feet from the building.
From the curb, yeah. And that puts him about a foot away from his house. And he's got, he's got a sliding, sliding glass door and he can't put a deck on it right now. So, it's just the way that whole lot was set up. But it went through the planning commission and planning commission all approved it. So, but I'll read the recommendation. Recommendation to approve resolution 2021, 2022-21, a resolution approving of a variance to allow the placement of a deck 14 feet from the right of way on 14th Avenue South, Cold Spring, or property located at 1308 Fourth Street South.
Well, I'm on the planning commission and I was present. We went through the street thoroughly and I would make the motion that we approve it.
All right. Mike makes a motion. How about a second? Brian seconds it. Any discussion on it? Mike, Doug, sorry.
Where is the line on this fence versus the line on the fence, I think, to the south of this one that was put up? Is that, what's the-
That's his house.
So, we're asking for a variance after the fence was up?
No, the fence is fine. This is a deck.
A deck.
So, the fence wasn't considered a-
Fences can go to the property line because it was only four feet high. If you wanted to go six, you would have had to get the variance. So, the fence is four feet on the property line, the deck. So, you must have driven by. There's kind of a cherry tree that's just north. It's gonna be behind that tree. The tree's not coming out.
Okay.
And the patio door is right there by the tree. So, it's 14 feet off the-
It'll be behind my fence. My fence will still be out further than the deck would be.
Well, I have.
All right. Go ahead, Ryan.
Is there any future expansion of the right of way of 14th Avenue?
No, it's already a-
It's a pretty large building.
It's 80 already.
It's 80 already. We have never gone higher. 80 is the county. So, it was built that way in case 14th ever became 49. And there's no driveway to his. It's just the deck would be there.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. There you go.
There you go. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming, Chris. Number seven, approval of the development agreement with the Cold Spring Area Baseball Incorporated, Drew Van Loy and David Jonas. David, is your mic on? Just push. It is now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So, first off, thanks for having us back. We hope this one is similar to the lighting agreement that we went through a few weeks back. But Bridget and us and Sue have been working on an agreement to officially enter in and get this building kind of in motion, which is, I believe, the last step, or at least one of the very last steps in order for us to get this, get some dirt moving at the end of the year. So, I believe you guys probably have a copy of it and we're able to read that. We're hoping to break ground here in September. When the season gets over, everybody's done using the field, we would get the dirt worked on, connect water and sewer, stuff like that, with potentially walls coming in December, January, and then maybe even moving in in February with completion after the fact with landscaping and any of that stuff that would go on once the building is erected next spring after the thaw comes out. But we're here today to answer any questions you might have and/or hopefully get your approval to sign the agreement.
All right. I'll read the recommendation first. Recommendation to approve the development agreement with Cold Spring Area Baseball Incorporated for construction of a field house at the Cold Spring Baseball Park. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Doug makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second it.
Brian seconds it. Any discussion on it? Anybody's got anything? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. There you go.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Number eight, construction committee report. Tabled council discussion from June 28. All right, where are we gonna go?
Are we making a decision tonight? Are we just discussing this again?
No, let's make a decision.
So, are we just going over concepts that even have a shot? Or is we kind of, it's kind of down to A and C, wasn't it?
Well, I don't know. I think we could talk probably about the public hearing, what we learned at the public hearing.
Sure.
I have quite a few things to say. I don't want to take up other people's something to say, but I'll give it a start. There was really nobody that liked that location. And I get notes on what everybody said. The most I had, we had some people that said, you know, the location isn't great, but it's what we got. And that was the, I had been contacted by numerous people since that. Not a single person has come to me and said, I like that location. Every person that's contacted me said, the location, it's response time, it's everything, and the location is not good. And we did the GIS study, it came out worse. That was the worst location for response time. You know, we had an explanation about the fire, fire time being acceptable, but that really doesn't include the rescue part of it. You know, when a fireman has to drive in from North Point to get to there, and that's quite a distance to do. That adds response time just in order to get there to get in the truck. So, you know, it might have been adequate for fire, but it's certainly not adequate for first response. And I understand that the, you know, police are there with a, with a heart defibrillator before probably anybody else. But if there's an accident other than that, you know, that's not gonna be as much help if there's a, you know, if they need the EMTs there. Response time is definitely gonna be different. The visual of the location, I mean, it's a terrible visual. There's nowhere for traffic to go on that road if they put it at Sauk River. It's a, you know, I guess I'm gonna echo what Chuck said earlier. You know, this thing's gonna be there for 50 years and I think we've got an obligation to put it in the right location. And I think there are other spots in town that will work for a smaller building. Some of those sites were discounted initially because the building was so big, it wouldn't fit there. But now that the building is smaller, I think it will fit on some of these other locations. I know there's a reluctance to buy property from the granite company. I don't know if there's been any movement on the granite property, price from the granite company.
There has been.
There has been movement. And so, their movement is what?
They need an appraisal on it to figure out what it's worth and then up to probably 250 total. But they'd need the appraisal to come over that so that they can have a tax benefit for it. And if it doesn't meet that appraisal-
So, they did move someone for the price. And, you know, I look at that, especially if they move, even if they hadn't moved, you know, that's less than 10% of the value of the property. You know, if you buy a $400,000 house and you're gonna spend $40,000 for a lot, that's usually 10%. And this is a big project. And so, you know, I don't think we should be afraid of buying the land if it's the right spot. I think that it can be built. And on one of these other sites, I think there are a couple of sites that will work. That site, and I think that this building would fit also behind Winner's Bar if we purchased part of that triangle and blocked off that road and use some of that for parking. We wouldn't even have to take all the parking lot, about half the parking lot and block off the road. You can have a drive-through thing. And I guess I'll summarize it by saying, you know, I don't want this on my conscience that somebody didn't get help in time. And so, I can't see voting for that location. I don't have any problem with fire hall. You know, some people have said it's excessive. I'm not sure about that. I think the fire hall sites have already been reduced. So, I'm not here to argue about the building. I'm not here to argue against getting a new fire hall and upgrading the fire hall by doing that. But it's not gonna be on my conscience that a person didn't get help in time when they could have. The other final thing I guess I want to say, I did have a, one of the people that used to work at the granite company told me that on that site on Sauk River, that that's where they used to dump sludge. And so, there's, there was quite a bit of sludge on that property. And I don't know if that's a fact or not, but that's what I was told. So- that's what I was told. So I don't know if that site is pure either. And again, for me, it's the response time and the location.
Brian, you got?
Didn't do sort of work on that site. It would have brought in. Building higher, but it was, it was something that would.
Okay.
That's all I got. Your response time for me. It's not about the building.
Anybody got anything?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll go next. I know last meeting we talked that that was the site out there. But I will be retracting what I said last meeting. I mean, in spite of what I just heard from Bridget and all, that price of that land is quite a bit cheaper than what it was originally. It was around 400,000. I think now it's 250. But since then, I've had, like, again, Mike said already, I've had number of people talk to me about not putting it out there, not putting it out there. And that's including some firefighters. And that was disheartening to hear that firefighters that are on the current department don't want it out there. So I think we need to do our due diligence and, and I brought, I said that at the last meeting. I mean, yeah, we pushed this off, but let's not make a hasty decision. I truly believe if we push this off and put this out for bid next year, prices are going to be down. The housing market is going down, so that means people aren't building. And I know some people don't want to push it off again, but I truly believe that prices are going to come down and that would give us time to look into that granite company property more, but I, I just think we need to, let's not make a hasty decision tonight. Let's talk about it a little bit more and, and if, I mean, if we want to make a motion to do something tonight, you know, that's everybody's right, but I think we should do our due diligence and, and look into it more. And I'm hoping some people that are here tonight would speak up about not wanting it out there also. That's my two cents.
Jim Kramer.
I, I agree. I think that location out there is the absolute wrong spot for response time. The other thing is, when this got started back in January, when I worked, we went and looked at several places. One was single fire police. The other one, Sartell. And Sartell in my mind was completely, I couldn't believe the way that building is set up there. If, if they would have, New York doesn't have a police station and Thorius and that one has. And, and so when this thing got set up, if you asked the employee in the city, what do you want or need to replace the fire hall or the police station? And they gave them, gave you all the criteria, what they wanted. And, and the price got so crazy that we asked them, well, what can you get rid of? And they don't want to get rid of anything. And I think the, the cart wasn't set in front of a horse here. They should have set a budget in my mind. Council should have set a budget, we're going to spend this much money on a fire hall and police station and then work it back from that.
Well, I, I think most of us had a, had a basic budget. We, we talked. I know, I know Doug said about 7 million. I said, I said anything under, under eight.
Seven and a half was in the RFP.
Yeah, and, and that's what, yeah.
For a joint.
It was about 7.5 was what it ended up. We had something like that, yes. And that's where, that's why, it was at 7.2 last year when, 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 when we stopped this whole thing. We had it within where everybody wanted it. It wasn't that it got blown out of proportion. It was right where we wanted it.
Well, I think it came down from $60,000 square feet to $13,000.
Yeah, it, it got, it got knocked down, but that's because, that's because five bugles or Wendell, they, they started with a, this is, this is what everybody had in mind and then they shrunk it from there with the committee. And that was with, that was with our police chief, with the, with the fire chief. That was everybody there. We didn't, we did our due diligence with that. That building was, was knocked down. You could ask Doug. He, he was one of them who did it.
But Mr. Mayor, I will, will, for the record, I would say, but I've also said, we can cut more.
Absolutely, you do.
So I'm going to be clear that we can still cut more out of this building.
So.
That's my point. It seems like the employees, city are stating what they need as part of the fire hall. Now, I've got nothing against anybody that worked here with the city or what it is, but I think it's time. The council says that we're going to spend this much money and we're going to move it back into the community. And if that spot there at Granite Landing isn't the right spot, there's got to be some place in town that you could, for, for that kind of money, you could probably buy a couple older homes in town, remove them and build a fire hall downtown here.
The reason, the reason I wasn't going to put it over there, we, we looked at that. We looked at Granite Landing. We, we said it was too much. Now with, with what I just heard now, I could, I could be swayed over to, over here too. I don't care. It's just out there, out there was, was a, in, in my opinion, a better option than, than spending $400,000 on a, on a lot and then, and then we had to spend, I don't know how much, to take the granite out and, and get footings in there. That's where, that's where, that's where I looked at. We were going to spend another million dollars over, over what, what we already had. We had 7.2, 7.2 million. Now it's going to be 8.2 million. That was over what any of us on the council even wanted. That's why we had it out there. Now, if we can get it within reason and put, put a fire hall there, I'm, I'm all for anything like that. I'm not saying that we have to have it out there. I, it was.
I just fucking building and you got a way out there in the east end of town where there's all, all our fire and rescue will be the north, south, west.
And it was always, it was a better solution than what, what, what we ever come up with. And that's why we did that.
So if you consider going to build it out there, then did they design that setup the loader or was that the building? Then you tried to fit that?
We, we had a budget and we fit that within that budget.
You didn't have a building drawn in?
No. Not when we purchased that property, no. Or it's designated that property as that, no.
I remember one meeting Laura said, we're, we have a place behind Winter's Bar. Fire had to try and move that building. He said you'd have to clear every house on that.
No, that, that's not true. That part was misinformation because one of the things, that was the bigger building. This is a smaller building. And on that site, you don't have to have a holding pond because it's already impervious surface. So that.
No, no, there we will.
There we go.
That's all I, that's all I granite landing. No, I'm talking about the trail, the trail site behind Winters. That doesn't need a holding pond.
That needs a holding pond?
The trail site, behind Winters.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even going to even think about closing the street. That's one thing I will not do. Not even part of it.
Well, I think it'd be a perfect location for a drive-through. And that's what they want. The drive-through. You could drive.
Not, not closing the street. It's not perfect.
Well.
If you're going to, if you're going to put a drive-through and downtown, then, then your best option would be over by Shwil.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with that site. Either one of those sites are fine for me.
Did you not close? I'm not, I'm not, I won't even, I won't even come up with anything that, you couldn't come up with anything to make me say yes to closing the street. Not even close.
Brian.
Just to kind of speak about coming up with a budget. All budgets take a lot of insight from other people, particularly people that are professionals in a particular field that you're building, building for. So you got to take a lot of advice from fire chief, police chief and those. That's, that's where, you know, we, we don't know that stuff. So to come up with a number just out of thin air isn't going to happen, you know, but so that's where some of these budgets come from. And then once you get that general information, then you can set it down and then you start trimming it down, you know, and I think, you know, from what I'm hearing, because I wasn't a part of those discussions, it sounds like you guys are doing your due diligence to try and trim it down. And like you said, maybe there's still some room to do a little bit more. But I think it wouldn't be fair to the council to say that, you know, we arbitrarily came up with a number and then just filled the building in with it. It came with, you know, insight from other people. To speak on the different sites. To be honest, I was always in favor, especially back in September when it first came up to vote that it'd be out on Sock River. The Sock River Road. Just for the simple fact of the financial part of it. Just the money's done. It's in there. Get it going. To be honest though, I mean, I've been getting the same phone calls too where there's, none of the people that I've talked to were in, in favor of moving it out there. And driving out there a couple of different times, just kind of looking at both sites just personally. I mean, I agree in a lot of ways, the Granite Landing site is probably a better site and especially now considering the, the price might be coming down. And that's kind of where my head was at as I came in today is that I would be more inclined to roll that site in one way or the other, but there's still a lot of questions there too. We still have, you know, probably additional soil borings we got to do now, you know, suitability of the site in general.
But it's still less than 10% of the cost.
Yeah.
Project.
Right.
And that's, to me, that's not, not a problem.
Right. No, and that's to say, I mean, the prices, prices up. I think, you know, to look back and, you know, be upset about, you know, what, what happened in the past is in the past. Now we got to move forward. So I guess my thought is we keep pushing forward and we make a decision and get something figured out. If that's Granite Landing, so be it. But I would be in favor of continuing to keep this project moving.
The thing I brought up is that spend the money to buy Granite Landing. You could sell a two acres or three acres of that front, frontage to some commercial business and get them on a tax roll. You know, if they, it was said that they need that space for the disposal plant. Well, if that's the case, then why are we building a fire hall?
Exactly.
I, I guess I would, I would look at probably seeing if we, what kind of, what kind of price we can get on that property then. But I think we should keep moving forward on it. I, I don't think, I don't think we should be waiting till next summer or anything like that because I just don't.
Well, we had a motion once before to move with soil borings and it was a two to two vote. We didn't have a fifth person. I would reinstate that motion. We go ahead and get soil borings done on the Granite Landing site. What was the cost of that, Bridget?
That was like 12,000?
13 to 15.
13 to 15? Okay.
I'm going to renew my motion that we go ahead with soil borings on the Granite Landing site.
Second that. Mike makes a motion to do soil borings. Brian seconds it. Any discussion on it? Doug?
We'll have to make sure the granite company is okay with us going on that property though, right?
Yeah, they will be.
They are, they are agreed to that.
And then the second follow-up, then is that in that motion, we have Bridget also confirm a, a set price for that property?
Do we have something in writing from them yet or not?
Nope. I would have to, it all was contingent on what your discussion was tonight, so.
Well, I think if, once we do the soil borings, we'll have a better idea of where we're at.
Yeah, I think we need more information on the site. So soil borings, I'd be in favor of that too.
All right, any other discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Go ahead.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
At the last 28th, June the 28th meeting, we were talking about package A, B, and C. Where is that going now? No place?
Well, it would be a fire only, right?
Well, I mean, there was.
Be in stages. Be in stages.
Yeah, but I mean, packages, if, if, and I lost it and I was thinking for that. And what, what all package A had in it and what package B had in it.
Also, Ramlo, you're talking about package B. It had the police and fire both at Granite Landing.
That package A was fire alone and then remodel. Package A was to remodel then the city, the place for here and that. That was package A.
With the library at some unknown location.
Yeah. So, and package B was fire and, and place.
At Granite Landing.
At Granite Landing.
Yep. And library in City Hall here.
Okay.
So we're talking about.
Because I had that, you know, I had enough on here.
We're talking about package A.
So, and I thought from the June the 28th meeting, we kind of already had that established by, there was just going to be at Granite Landing, a fire hall. And then we were going to talk about improving this site.
Correct.
No?
Yes. After the fire hall is built.
Please.
Yeah, that's what we had talked about then, right?
Yep.
Well, then this, the speech I gave last meeting, then I, I thought maybe, what did I say the right thing?
Yes, you did.
So are you going to make a, a decision on a package or are you just wanting soil borings at this point?
No, we're just moving with the fire hall.
But I'd be, I'd be very interested in looking some more at putting police out there too.
If it's possible. That might be a money saver. If they think about having to redo it and add it in here two years from now or three years from now.
I don't, I don't know if that site was, well, I think we, once we get the soil borings, we'll have a better idea.
Right, because we'd have to.
You can put a, you can put them both there. There, it's in, package B has them both on Granite Landing.
And, and package A, you can't get the library and you'd have to put some.
Well, we do that, we're going to be spending more money.
Yes, exactly. That's why, that's why I'm wondering.
That, I, I, my mind, we're talking about package A.
And when you say package A, what, what are you saying is package A? You say package A, but you say fire only.
Fire only at that location, police and administration here, library at a separate location.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought. Package A was.
Yeah, that's what package A is.
Yeah. So then, yeah, because I don't think we can fill the library's needs having the library here at the city hall anymore for what they need.
With, with police, with police here, yes.
Because they were asking for 4,200 square feet. They were having.
Well, and the library was the cheapest one to build.
Well, I, I'm just going by other cities and when I was on the Gray River Board and a lot of the libraries are not being built within the city complexes is because of ours. The front doors are locked sooner and stuff and that's why the library people wanted to get out of. Those, they wanted to run their own. And, well, like Kimball's and stuff, I went over there and looked at theirs and, you know, Maple Lake has some. well, like Kimballson stuff, I went over there and looked at theirs and, you know, Maple Lake has some issues. I don't think the library should be here either.
So we should, we should probably look for a place for them right away too then.
Well, also, you know, is there going to be more open buildings within this city proper? Is there going to be something that the city is going to, you know, look into like some buildings? Like some business people are looking to get out of their building in the downtown area to build a bigger structure. Now, would that be against our judgment to look into that? Rent a building, lease one? Or that don't, you know?
You have to own it to get some of the grants, right?
And Great River requires it.
Oh, and
No.
I don't think the, the city is responsible for the building. I don't know that I've heard anything so you do have to own it in order to get grants from the state. That is, that might be
That I've heard, I've heard that many times already.
That don't make sense to me, when I was on that board, so that doesn't, to me, that doesn't make sense. There's something because there is places leasing and renting for the Great River too, so that doesn't make sense to me. But anyway, I've got this, I'm sitting here, this A, so that was the thing on my mind and we'll go with that. I mean, I will. And that's good that we went with borings, you know, to do, to due diligence, you know? And then if the borings come back and we can't put a hundred-foot tower on that property, then, you know, we'll go someplace else again, you know? So but like Mr. Creswell has said, he says with the new technologies and stuff, you'd be surprised where they can put buildings and, and stuff. It just takes a little more ingenuity, you know, so.
Well, it will. It's, and it's, but that, that costs money too.
But then, and, but then everybody knows that it's going to cost a little bit more money. We are still going to have what the people want. And the consensus is the people wanted in town to keep the integrity in town, you know? Once we start moving that stuff out, the inner city is going to start losing interest in everything. They start to rot out from the center out, you know, and we saw that happen already for all those years I've been on the council was since New Twenty-three came in, I mean, everybody jumped out and went on and the inner city was already falling apart. I guess I'm done.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
If you go with A and choose to do a library later, where would you house the library in?
That's why I was, that's why I was asking the question, we should probably look for a place for the library already. Because it's gonna be a separate, separate from this building and then we might as well do it now. It's cheap enough. I mean, yeah.
And we can start looking for lots, we can start going after grants. I mean, there's a slush fund already started, started within the library. It's, Bridget, how much is in there?
Our share is about one
I think it's, yeah, I thought it was in the $300,000 range, a slush fund already. So I mean, there's a lot of money there and we can go after grant monies and stuff and
Well, I think people would donate to it too, you know?
And the grants that they can get. I'm sure they can get something for it.
And if anybody owns a piece of land that wants to donate that piece of land, I think we'd look at that, we'd willing to listen to it.
So we should start doing that too.
Yep.
I don't know who or how, how to go about that. Who would start that?
Sound like a hole.
Well, we should
We could talk about that later. We have time.
If the planning commission should be doing that or, or, or EDA or, or somebody should probably look into it. Hi Chuck.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
But I mean, if you decide the police and fire can both fit over by Schweel, then all that blood here is city admin and library.
And that's the other, that's the other way.
But that is gonna cost more money.
Well, and, and Doug. But library and admin in this building is way overkill. Way overkill. That's why, I, I mean, I am for expansion, but not overkill. A standalone library and admin and police here? Yes. But library and admin here? No. I mean, it's way, I mean, take that apparatus bay out there, just the forage in that, that's
Yeah, I agree.
Four thousand square foot in that apparatus bay. You know, that's a lot of square footage to have admin in a library. Right, so that, but I'm just saying, and now you'd have the rest of this is admin?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Would there be possibility the library had to hold the F building at all?
That's been, that was brought up, oh, when I first got on, on the city council, it was brought up and it was probably
I think
Pretty much put a stop to it.
I think Saint Boniface.
Would Saint Boniface buying that, possibly buying that, I
Yeah, I think I would say no. Because they're working on buying that.
Well, I agree with you.
And also the library, some of the gals that had a meeting that soon the library will have locks out in, out in the outside, more outside things to do. And this year when here, there's nothing really to go out and sit under a bench in where there's grass and trees and stuff, and the library is expanding to those kind of needs too, you know, so this library here would not fit that.
Though I agree, we think we need to start looking for a piece of land. I don't know what the mechanism would be to do that. We need another committee or one of our existing committees could start doing that. Well, maybe we should have a separate committee composed of library people and maybe one of us or
Well, should we wait till next meeting and come up with some type of idea?
Sounds good.
All right, we'll do that. We got everything?
I think the only one
Okay, go ahead.
One more quick thing. The only other thing I would bring up is that if we're gonna do a fire hall only, I think we should expedite the other part as well, make sure that police are taken care of as well. I guess that's my only point. They're working in situation right now where it's almost embarrassing honestly, what they're having to deal with. So I think that would be a priority. But I just wanted to make that on the record too.
The downfall is we have to get rid of fire hall.
First. But you can have your drawings, you can have
Oh, yes.
You're building a concept and everything, everything ready to go, oh forbid, you know, instead of waiting.
That we'll have to do.
I got a question. So, so we're going with A? And we're gonna look in the grant, are we going with the footprint that's here or are we gonna discuss footprint yet? Wow, I see you that question. I mean, is this the size of the building that we're, we're just gonna have them design? Or are we going to look at sizes yet? Yes.
You know, the committee, I think you want those soil borings, know where granite is before you decide on a size. I would personally, I would just recommend waiting for the borings to be back before you really make
When we met, when we met with Laura during the process, she did say, we're just putting it there to see if this size would fit. It doesn't, it has to be totally redesigned. Anyhow, so it's not the building that was designed, so the size will have to be discussed again at that design, because we're gonna start over.
One step at a time.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to be on record that I want to look at sizes yet because I truly think that some of this can be cut.
Some more.
Some more. Without a fifth bay.
But room to add.
But room to add it down the road.
That's gonna cost.
If you need it. Those are decisions we gotta make, if we need it.
All right, everybody good with the report?
Yep.
All right, then we'll move on to number nine. Fire department report, chief whoever.
How's it going, Mayor and Council? Just a summary. Well, let's just do the other things first because it's at the end of the month. We have the declaring that our old pumper which is out of service now. We have a Donut City shop. Get rid of, put it out of forbids and get some money for it. Might be a small department that might want it or there's plenty of people in this town that are looking at it. What's the value we're going to put on? Granny, I don't know. I mean, if you gotta sell something, you gotta have
Why?
A value or a price.
Forty years old.
And we can't give it away either, but we can't go with a crazy price either.
But it's on sealed bids, so we really can't.
Seal bid, all right. Because I know that place out in Rice, when I was out there looking at a big truck and they, that guy told me they buy fire trucks too, so and sell them all over the United States. He says some of his fire trucks go to third world countries. He says so. And there was a lot of them sitting there, fire trucks that was the size. And I was just curious what price he puts on it and they go for a thousand dollars, it could probably go up to five, seven, five to seven, I don't know.
And what's that place, I forgot that place called and just ask them too what's it worth? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I bought a forty-six to be from the fire department, they put it on a gift and they publicized it in the paper. And there was four bidders on that. I had this number and I got and I think that's I mean, why sell it for a thousand and then we get
Oh, absolutely. Right. Should I read the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Recommendation to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty declaring the seventy, nineteen seventy-six pumper truck surplus property and allow for the fire chief to dispose of it.
I'll make a motion.
Rand makes a motion, I'll give it a second.
I'll second it.
Doug seconded. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, next one?
Yes.
Did I read the recommendation?
Yeah.
All right. Approval to hire two firefighters, recommendation to approve the firefighter, firefighter hiring committees, recommendation to fill two current openings with Stephanie Crohn and Luke Shurm contingent upon successful completion of the standard physical examination. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Rand makes a motion, Ryan seconded. Any discussion on it?
No.
Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. See, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. Fire department at community event, recommendation to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution approving fire department attendance at community event. I need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Mike makes a motion, I'll give it a second.
I'll second it.
Doug seconded. Any discussion on that? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. All right, next one's yours.
Thanks. Monthly report, we had sixty-one calls for the month in June. We're at nineteen as of today. A lot are asking calls. Fire crashes. I would, it's gonna come to a point, we're gonna have higher you know, at least on a day shift and the rest of us possibly have pagers, you know, something more than it's a possibility.
It is.
We're gonna hit, we'll hit five hundred, at least five hundred and fifty this year.
Yeah, something to think about.
Yeah.
I'm curious.
So other than that, I got a few other things. We have a Suburban that was in our shop, our shed here. We've had it fifteen years. And we got it from the DNR as a surplus vehicle. When we don't want it, use it anymore, we have to deliver it back up to Willow
Willow River.
Willow River up north. So it's a DNR truck. I would like to get rid of it because we have no room for it, we don't use it anymore.
We need a motion for that or?
Oh, do you guys need to think about it a little bit or?
I don't.
If you wanna get rid of it.
Do it. Will it make it up there? Drive the thing on.
Well, it might go, it might go in somebody's trailer.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Mike makes a motion to get rid of Suburban, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Ryan seconded. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're not paying for the full cup.
I'll bill it to you, Dave. Um, just a couple of other things with the building thing, this fire hall, police business. My encouragement would be to have it leased on fire. And they are way off with, we're soft and we are, we're full already. But they have no room for anything. I believe they can put those two together. My opinion on it. They have no room for any of their stuff right now. The only other thing I have to say is that it's too bad we have wasted at least two plus years, we're down nowhere. That's all. Thank you people.
Thank you.
Anything for us?
I'll send you the best one.
Good.
Sales?
They're doing good. Yep. We were up there last night getting a bunch of counseling and stuff. So for decent weather, a hundred degree weather. Everything's going good and yep.
Good.
We've always been good to work with, so thank you for re, for their help and stuff, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trevor. Number ten, Public Works Director report, John Stevie along with
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Hi, John.
Letter A, accepting a word seal coat bid. Just a little recap, we had two bids. Kind of how that works is we don't just have a designated area, we always try to ask for a little bit more just in case prices come back good and we can squeeze it in our budget. Prices were a little higher than our budget, but we have some spots we can cut out that we added. Aztec Corp at two dollars per yard for seal coat and Fox Seal, Allied Blacktop two fifty-eight per yard. My recommendation is to prove Aztec Corp.
Is Aztec the ones that did Red River?
Yes.
Is that the same process that they're gonna use?
They might use a different emulsion, but
But it's the same basic
Yep.
finished result.
Yep. We, we started doing Fox Seal a few years ago just because it gives us a better product and it's a quicker process.
Okay, recommendation to approve and award the seal coat project to Aztec Corporation for seal coating and fog Okay, recommendation to approve and, and award the seal coat project to Aztec Corporation for seal coating and fog sealing up to ninety thousand dollars. Furthermore, to be paid out of the street budget line item sixty-six eleven, I need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Also, Rand. Makes motion, Mike seconded, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Um, just a couple of updates. As you see in your packet, summer newsletters and review at City Hall should be going out here shortly for the residents, which is some updates of, in my opinion, crucial ordinances that we have that residents need a reminder and update on. Water rates, we've been discussing that. It's slightly more complicated than just changing it, but at the next council meeting, we will have a, I think Bridgette said there's a little bit of a process we have to follow being it's an ordinance. So, the next council meeting, we will have a, a number for you guys to approve. Other than that, that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
You got anything? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
We'll go on to number eleven, City Engineer report, Ryan mentioned.
Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, just updates tonight. The twenty-twenty-one brewery project, um, most of the work on that's complete. We've done the road patching. At this point, there's some grading behind Fifth Avenue to be done on lift station A. Otherwise, we're just waiting on components, uh, electrical panels, controls and generators. Stand pipe, they, we got the starter ring of steel, um, which was good news, that's been cast into the base. We're looking at end of July delivery on the remainder of the steel. So, as soon as they get that, they'll be bolting that together and in probably a matter of days, it'll look like a water tower. And then the twenty-twenty-two improvements, just working on wrapping up the design. Um, otherwise, loo hair and a few pond upgrades remain on that, otherwise that project's almost done. Water treatment plant, working on the interior piping right now, uh, a bunch of the site piping work as well. They're kind of about halfway through the site work or the site pipes. After that, they'll start doing the grading for the parking lot and other things outside. And then, um, looking at getting the electrical service in in July. Things are moving, moving along well on it.
All right.
And then the industrial wastewater plant, um, we're actually tomorrow or Thursday, they're going to start excavation work. Moving in equipment trailers, I think I saw a crane sitting there on the way in tonight, so, things are really going to start picking up in a couple of weeks here. See a lot more activity out there.
All right. That's it?
That's all I have unless there's questions.
Have you got anything? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Number twelve, Police Department report, Chief Bloom.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, just start out with some monthly reports for May for Cold Spring, Richmond. In Cold Spring, we had three hundred and fifty-eight total incidents, thirty-nine medicals, sixteen suspicious activities, a hundred and seven traffic stops, with twenty-four citations issued and then a hundred and ninety-six miscellaneous calls for service. Uh, in Richmond, we had ninety-one total incidents, ten medicals, five suspicious activities with thirty-two traffic stops that had eight citations, then forty-four miscellaneous calls for service. Um, some of the other stuff we've got going on, ordinance violations, we're checked out. The end of last month, um, they're following, uh, the officers are going to be following up. Letters got sent out for those violations, the officers can be following up starting tomorrow. So, if anybody, um, hasn't taken care of those or got the letter, just please take care of it. Makes the process a lot easier on everybody. National Night Out is Tuesday, August second. If anybody's having a block party, community party, um, anything like that, let us know. We can have an officer stop by, we've got a schedule that we're putting together. And we're working on an event, but it's not finalized yet, so hopefully have that advertised shortly for an event that is going to get put on. We're also doing a bike rodeo July twenty-first at five P M. I believe that's also music in the park or whatever the label is for it over at the splash pad that night at five P M. We're going to be on the trail next to it, so anybody that's bringing kids, families to that, and we'll have stuff set up to register bikes. We'll have some prize drawings, that kind of thing, that's July twenty-first at five P M. Other than that, it's, uh, it usually is, but this year seems busier than the last couple, so, um, just a couple of things we dealt with. We've found a couple handguns on traffic stops in the last few weeks here. One was a traffic stop, located the gun loaded with narcotics. Another one, we had a pursuit, um, that we located actual large amount of narcotics with a loaded handgun in that. Um, we've had people fleeing from vehicles, um, stolen vehicle, and that one was just, keys were left in the vehicle. So, another reminder, lock your vehicles, don't leave any, any, anything of value in there, take your keys out, lock your outbuildings. We did recover that vehicle, but just a reminder to make sure to lock those things out. And then another thing, D W I seem to be on the rise more than the last couple of years this year for some reason. If you're going to go out and have a few adult beverages, now plan a safe ride home, please. Makes our life easier. Less work on everybody else too. And then, as usual, the speed trucks available, if anybody out there has a place they would like it. That's kind of what we got going on. That's all I have unless you guys have questions for me.
Have you got anything?
Who is our dogs, our dog thing doing? Uh, replacing the dog?
Working on a grant right now, that's a matching grant to, if we can raise half of the funds to pay for it, they'll, will cover the other half of the funds. Um, so waiting to see if we get approval or if we're awarded that and, uh, just out there trying to collect donations.
But we're still, we're still pursuing it yet.
Yes, absolutely.
Anything else? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, City Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, the first one is, uh, we did get some responses to our second advertisement of cleaning. These are professional services. For the last fifteen years, we've had an individual do it. And we've had very, that was done on very low cost. But people aren't doing that anymore at a low cost. And, uh, there were two, uh, businesses that applied and they both had the same amount. And one is a local business and one is out of St. Cloud, so we are recommending the local business. Flip Cleaning for the City Hall of Cleaning Services. The, the one nice thing is, we always supplied the supplies, they bring their own. So, there is a little bit of savings, even though it's quite a bit more than what we were paying.
Well, when are they going to come?
Twice a week.
All right. Recommendation to approve contract, contracting with Flip Cleaning at a monthly cost of one thousand six hundred eighty dollars a month. I need a motion. I'll make a motion. Ryan makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconded, any discussion on it?
Are they going to, do they do garbage and stuff too, or?
All of it.
And they'd probably bring their own equipment, I imagine.
Well, we have a vacuum, so, and mop here, they use that, but the.
How many times?
Supplies they use for the mopping and the cleaning will be theirs.
Okay.
What was that?
How many times? Did it once a week?
Twice a week.
Twice a week.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And the next one is just, uh, the auditors will want you to make a motion about the raise, and so it's on here because we did not do it that night.
Recommendation to approve a three-point-five percent raise for the city administrator. Need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Doug makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Ryan seconded, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Um, one other thing, the newsletter is, um, unedited right now. There's one item on there that I, I hope to keep on, so I'm waiting to hear from the Initiative Foundation when they sign their agreement with deed for the Main Street revitalization. I, I hope to have that on the newsletter, so I'm giving, they haven't gotten their documentations, and so they don't have a signed agreement, so we can't advertise it. I'm going to, I'm going to wait till Thursday to see if I can get it. They get everything set and I can put it in there, otherwise we'll have to wait till we can take that off. Because I want to get the newsletter out with the information that John has on there. So, let's hope deed moves forward.
All right. That's it?
That's it, and fourteen should have been removed because none of the, well, some of them, at the end of the month, we usually do those at the end of the month. Well, you can go through it, the answer will be nothing, nobody met except for E D A.
E D, does E D A want to report? Did you, did you guys meet on?
Yeah, we did meet.
Yep.
Jim, you're here, why don't you do the report?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we, uh, talked about, uh, the Initiative Foundation, you know, we, we came up or I should say Bridgette and I'll maybe let you, you.
Yeah. Jim Kramer, the president of the E D A, um, April Sauer, Vivid Photography, and actually Maria Logo from Flip Cleaning. And I sat on a committee to develop the application process. We had to, as part of the, as a target city, we had to generate our own application and identify, the objectives of the grant for the Minnesota, or for the Main Street revitalization. So, come up with that and waiting, and we got it all set and waiting for approval to send it out and get to. That's what we did yesterday. Thanks, Jim.
All right. The Park Board, before he trailed in yet?
We're meeting this Thursday.
Okay, then we'll go on to number fifteen. List of bills in addition, recommendation to review and accept pay, payment of accounts payable according to the list and supplement the list presented by city staff. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Brian makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconded, any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number sixteen, general questions and comments from City Council, Brian.
I have nothing.
Doug.
I have nothing.
Mike.
Nothing.
Ryan.
Nothing.
I got one question, how is the apartment building, Doug, going on that?
The building permit is sitting, uh, at the, uh, building inspector for review. Um, now that everything is signed, at the next meeting, I should have the development agreement. And then we can, um, he can start building because he couldn't do anything until before July first. So, once he gets that approved, and then we can start, um, with, um, doing a drawdown from Minnesota Housing. Or it can be done in a, a third, a third, a third, so we can do it as soon as we give them down, uh, proof of the development agreement, which I hope to have at the next council. And then a third, um, I'm, I'm putting on there when his roof is on, because that'll, let him do some more work and then when it's completed.
Okay. All right. Then we go on to number seventeen, closed meeting, pursuant to Minnesota statute, section thirteen D point zero five subdivision, three C three, to consider and offer purchase property within the city of Cold Springs specifically parcel identification number four eight point two-nine four-four two point zero zero eight. Thank you guys very much.